Good evening, welcome to the March 26, 2024 Michigan City Area Schools Board of Trustees Meeting. We now stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the religion and justice of our own.
Now we have the reading of the mission statement.
We are a diverse community of families, students, and staff who take pride in our schools, contribute positively to society, and prepare students for lifelong success.
Thank you. Mrs. Painter, all members are present. At this time, we will open up to... One second. We'll open up to a public comment. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Also, no direct or indirect comments will be... No indirect or direct contact comments or conversation will be between the board and yourself. And also, we ask that you do not any derogatory comments towards staff or administration. At this time, public comment is now open. Public comment is now open. Public comment is now open. Public comment is closed. Thank you. It's time we will go into our consent agenda. Number one, approval of the minutes of proceeding meeting on February 27, 2024. Number two, approval of employee appointments, resignations, retirements, leave of absence, disciplinary action, and status change. Number three, approval of secretary's report on bills to be paid. And number four, approval of pay dates for February 9, 2024, February 23, 2024, March 8, 2024. And number five, travel reimbursement. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Painter carries, or passes, I should say. And at this time, we will have superintendent comments by Dr. Barbara Easton Watkins.
Good evening. Michigan City High School is collaborating with the Michigan City Chamber of Commerce to hold the Second Annual South Shore College and Career Fair at Michigan City High School on Wednesday, April 24 from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. This fair will provide juniors and seniors with an opportunity to engage with local employers and colleges, exposing students to post-secondary pathways and career opportunities specific to our region. Companies interested in participating should contact MCAS College and Career Coordinator Erin Garrett. The AK Smith Career Center will hold its annual Future Careers Expo on Thursday, April 18. They are seeking volunteers to help with mock interviews, and they invite representatives from businesses, trades, and higher education to set up tables to speak with students about opportunities. For more information, contact AK Smith Counselor Christina Urban. A reminder that this is the final week to turn in nominations for the Michigan City Area Schools' Wall of Fame, which honors former employees who've made a lasting impact on our students. Nomination forms, a list of past recipients, and additional information are available on our website. The Wall of Fame recipients will be honored at the annual retirement dinner on May 22. Barker Middle School's 7th and 8th grade bands both achieved gold ratings at the ISMA Middle School Band Festival on Saturday, March 16 at Kankakee Valley Middle School. The 7th grade band received a gold rating, and the 8th grade band scored gold ratings from all three judges. Congratulations to these students and to Barker Band Director Jason Smith. The Barker Middle School STEM program has been selected to receive a Student Innovation Award from the Center for Creative Solutions. The center will be presenting certificates to several Barker students and $500 to the school during Creativity and Innovation Week, which is April 8 through the 12. A special thanks to Barker STEM teacher Amy Hammond for her work with the students. We have several good news announcements from our boys' basketball team. Congratulations to Michigan City High School senior Alan Briggs, who was recently named to the Senior Honorable Mention All-State Team by the Indiana Basketball Coaches Association. Congratulations to Michigan City High School senior Andrew Vacari, who was one of only four Doolin Athletic Conference basketball players to be recognized as honorable mention Academic All-State by the Indiana Basketball Coaches Association. Congratulations also to Michigan City High School boys' basketball coach Tom Wells, who has been selected by the Indiana Basketball Coaches Association to serve as the assistant coach for the 2024 Indiana Boys Junior All-Stars Team. The Junior All-Stars will play one game against the Kentucky Junior All-Stars on June 2, and one game against the Indiana All-Star Senior Boys on June 5. Tom has a 76-46 record in his five seasons with the Wolves, and recently marked his 400th career coaching win. Congratulations to the Michigan City High School JROTC, which competed in a military drill on March 2 at Fort Wayne Concordia High School, bringing home a fourth-place award in color guard out of 20 participating schools. They were the highest-scoring Marine color guard, beating powerhouse teams from Indianapolis Ben Davis and Louisville Fern Creek. Special thanks to Major Tom McGrath and Sergeant Jeff Manock for their work with these students. The annual Michigan City Schools Elementary Arts Show opens on Wednesday, April 10 at the Lobestic Center for the Arts. A young artist reception is set for Wednesday, April 17 from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. This is always a very popular event, and it's a wonderful showcase for our talented artists in kindergarten through 6th grade. A special thanks to our elementary art teachers, who always do such a wonderful job preparing for the show. The Michigan City High School Drama Club will present its spring play Clue next month. The production is based on the Hasbro detective game and Paramount motion picture Clue. Performances will be held on Friday, April 26 at 7:00 p.m., Saturday, April 27 at 2:00 and 7:00 p.m., and Sunday, April 28 at 2:00 p.m. The cost for students is $10, and $15 for adults. A special thanks to Drama Club sponsor Angie Gresham, who is with us this evening, who was assisted by Katie Steinheiser, and a break of leg to the cast. I've been to some of their performances, and they are absolutely awesome. Congratulations to Michigan City High School student Mackenzie Rojas, who placed fourth in the state in the Outstanding Senior Category at the Indiana Department of Workforce Development's 2024 State Career Development Conference on March 15. The conference is an annual event for Indiana high school students enrolled in Jobs for America's Graduates Program, with students participating in competitions that highlight the employability skills that they have learned through the program. Mackenzie, who was honored last month as the Region One Outstanding Senior, plans to attend Ball State University. A reminder that the Michigan City Area Schools will be closed this Friday, March 29, which is Good Friday. The following week, April 1 through 5, is spring break. I wish all of our staff, all of our students, a relaxing spring break as we recharge for a positive finish to the school year. And now, this is the most important part of the program. We have many recognitions tonight, and we're honored to have with us tonight some students from Michigan City High School, who advanced to the state level in music, Japanese language, and art. And we're going to begin first with music. Starting with our choral students, on Saturday, February 17, 10 vocal music students traveled to Perry Meridian High School in Indianapolis to compete at the ISMA State Solo and Ensemble Competition. These students first participated in the Indiana State School Music Association Solo and Ensemble District Level Competition, which is commonly referred to as ISMA, and they advanced to the state because they earned gold ratings on music of the highest difficulty level. At state, all 10 of the students received gold ratings, and many of them received a gold rating with distinction, which is the highest possible rating, either as part of an ensemble or for a solo. Please come forward to be recognized as I call your name. Emma Abraham, who received gold with distinction as a member of the ensemble. And please remain up front. Madison Gresham, who received a gold for her solo and gold with distinction as a member of the ensemble. Paige Merrill, who also received gold for her solo and gold with distinction as a member of the ensemble. Hannah Parker, who received gold with distinction as a member of the ensemble. Maddie Perry, who received gold with distinction, both on her solo and as a member of the ensemble. Yona Sepies, who received gold for her vocal solo. Brooklyn Wade, who received gold with distinction for both her solo and as a member of the ensemble. Naomi Williams, who also received gold with distinction for both her solo and as a member of the ensemble. Avery Wingard, who received gold with distinction as a member of the ensemble. Alyssa Workman, who received gold for her vocal solo. And please also come forward, Michelle Howison, Choral Director. Thank you, Michelle, for your work with these talented students.
(laughter)
I'm old, but I'm gonna be here.
Now, before you leave, parents, if you're not here yet, please come forward, and we would like to take a picture with you, because as a former parent of an athlete, music, drama, I understand how much work you have put in to make sure that your students have achieved at such high levels. Once again, a big round of applause.
(laughter)
One of my students is not here because she actually had a tonsillectomy.
Oh, my, okay.
So she's recovering.
Okay. Next, we honor our band students. Seven Michigan City High School band students competed at the state-level ISMA competition on February 24 at North Central High School in Indianapolis. Like the choral students, these instrumental music students first competed at the district level contest, and they advanced to state because they earned gold ratings on music of the highest difficulty level. Please come forward as I call your names. First of all, let's start with Frank Anderson, who received gold with distinction for his work tenor saxophone. Sophia Barzak, who received gold on both the B-peg and B-peg clarinet. Jimmy Beela, who received gold with distinction on snare drum. Jada McHenry, who received gold on clarinet. Ashley Sparks, who received gold on both the oboe and the melophone, and she also served as an engineer. Vivian Taylor, who received silver on tenor sax. Isaac Genke, who received silver on alto sax. And please come forward, Frank Gass, Band Director, and Frank, thank you for your work with these talented students. And once again, parents, would you please come forward so you can join your students? And I know they achieved at the highest levels because of each one of you.
(applause)
Once again, a big round of applause for our Michigan students. And next, we want to recognize students that were part of a winning team at the state level in Japanese. Eleven Michigan City High School students traveled to Ball State University last month to compete in the Japanese Olympiad of Indiana, a day-long academic tournament for high school students studying Japanese. In the highest level of competition, which is Level 4, our high school team of Alejandro Aguirre and Lorenzo Pinoza won second place, finishing only one question behind the first-place team. Both of them, please come forward, Alejandro and Lorenzo. And can we also have Sensei Maitsegawa, our teacher of Japanese?
And I bet you guys will never forget that last trip.
If there are any parents, please come forward. They can, okay. Well, I would also like to note that Michigan City High School welcomed six students and two instructors from Zamasogo High School in Japan earlier this month. The students and teachers were hosted by our high school students who are studying Japanese. This longtime cultural partnership was interrupted due to COVID, and we are thrilled that we could welcome the group back this school year. Thank you, Sensei Sagawa, for continuing this special partnership. And once again, let's give our Japanese students a big round of applause. And I understand that Frank Anderson, who received gold with distinction for being for the tenor saxophone... Did you just come in? Come on fo... Come on down. And Mr. Gass, do you want to come down and take a picture with him? Come on back. Bring the group back together.
(laughter)
If parents come on back, wait a minute, we better tap the fingers. All the parents, if you don't mind, please come on back. All of our... Come on back. All of our band parents, come on back.
Campus, the folks.
We want to have the records look accurate. And last, but not least, we have a student with us who has excelled in art at the state level. Michigan City High School senior Samantha Krieger has been awarded the prestigious Scholastic Regional Gold Key Art Award in mixed media. Her work, entitled "Inner Child," was on display at the South Bend Museum of Art and advanced to the national jury competition. Samantha, please... You're here. You know the routine. And teacher, Taylor Tice, come on down. (applause) Samantha, your mom here?
Are you parents?
Okay, all right. Well, I can tell you, these are the board meetings that I truly love, and I know so do our board members, because we are so proud of all of the great things that are happening at Michigan City High School and across the district. And I can tell you, tonight, we were recognizing the best of the best, first in class, not just here in Michigan City, not just regionally, but those that performed at the highest level at the state competitions. So let's once again recognize our mighty wolves that are represented here today with a big round of applause. And thank you so much to our staff members and our parents who are here today, because we know their success reflects on the hard work that you put in. I know, I've been a parent, grandparent, and now I've got a great granddaughter. So I know, and we appreciate all of you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I don't know if any of our board members want to say anything while our students are still here? You're just awesome.
I just want to say, I know a lot of the high school students in this room, and it always makes me feel good about our future to see our kids doing so well, you know? Very soon, many of you are going to leave this place and go on to do bigger and better things, and it's just going to be awesome. This is a great group of kids, this class of 24, and go get them, guys. You can take the kid out of city, but you can't take the city out of the kid. Great job, guys.
Amen.
I just want to echo the statements that are said, or that have already been said, but again, continue the great work. This is... These are the board members, again, like Dr. Watkins said, that makes me proud to be a board member and be here, is to recognize you all and just to be able to showcase our talent out throughout the state. So again, thank you all for being you and doing the best that you can do, and just continue to keep up the good work, and we're proud of you. Thank you. And if anybody wanted to stay, you're welcome to stay, but if you wanted to leave, we'll give you a couple minutes.
(laughter)
Number one will be a client engagement agreement. Dr. McCollum.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Tonight, I am asking for the board to approve the client agreement that will provide legal services in connection with pursuing damages associated with social media litigation. This litigation has been adopted by several boards across our state and across the country. This is, once again, pursuing damages associated with social media, including Facebook, Meta, Instagram, Snapchat, TikTok, YouTube, and Google Services. Several districts in Indiana and around the state, as I mentioned, have joined this lawsuit as social media usage is one of the largest school safety challenges that we face as a district and most high schools around the country. As I mentioned, who are also joining in on similar litigation can also vouch for how this has negatively impacted our students in the amount of time that our administrators, our staff, our parents, and our community have to worry about the many negative images and videos that are part of these social media platforms. So with that information, we are asking for your approval for the Michigan City Area Schools to join the client agreement, to join the social media lawsuit.
Have any questions by any board members?
Yeah, I guess I wish Bill Kaminsky was here to talk more about this. Last time, there was a question about joining a lawsuit, or starting our own, because this is not a class action lawsuit, right?
Right.
Yeah, we had the attorney here who was trying to get people to sign on, and so we can ask some questions. So I guess, Bill Kaminsky's... I mean, he'll be knowledgeable, and I can call him and ask him.
Correct. And his firm is, unlike the previous one that we had discussion about with Vape, his firm is representing several districts in this region as part of this lawsuit.
I see. Okay, yeah, I'll just call him.
Any other questions? Seeing no further questions, to have a motion.
No further. Second.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm just abstaining. Abstain.
Okay. Mrs. Painter, we have six approooove... Six yays and one extension. Next, I... Extension of retirement window for certified staff. Dr. McCollum.
Okay. Tonight, I'm asking for the board's approval to extend the retirement window for our certified teachers through the end of the 2023-2024 school year, to accommodate any teachers who decide between now and the end of the school year to retire and still have access to the insurance benefits that are part of the collective bargaining agreement between the Michigan City Education Association and Michigan City Area Schools. Currently, we have nine teachers who have officially submitted their retirement that the board has approved, and this is an annual occurrence that we've had, that we extend the window, which closes March 15 through the end of the calendar school year. So with that, I am asking for you to approve the retirement window through the end of the 23-24 school year.
So moved.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Painter, that passes. Mrs. Painter, that passes. Next, number four, the, number three, bridging the gap MOU, Dr. McCollum.
Thank you again, Mr. Corley. Tonight, we are seeking approval for a memorandum of understanding between the Michigan City area schools and the Center of Workforce Innovations. This MOU will provide our students at the Pathways Program at Elston to receive support in a career advising, skill building, and attaining post-secondary credentials. This is a great opportunity for our students in the program to work with industry and community leaders in partnership with the Pathways staff. Right now, we have 87 students who are a part of the Pathways Program. There's an AM and a PM session. Twenty of those students are in need or wanting to participate in the program. And, and once again, they're going to be able to build relationships with some of our current industry partners, local banks, manufacturers, companies, and unions, walking students through the process of what path to take beyond high school. So with that, I am asking for your approval of the MOU between the Michigan City area schools and the Center of Workforce Innovations for the Bridging the Gap Program.
Any questions? Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Painter, that passes. Thank you. Next is a memorandum of understanding with the Michigan City Parks Recreation. Dr. McCollum.
Tonight, I am recommending for the board's approval the memorandum of understanding between the Michigan City area schools and the Michigan City Parks and Recs, a partnership that will allow for the Parks and Recreation to paint pickleball lines on the tennis courts at Krieger Middle School. Parks and Recs agrees to pay the cost of the painting and will also provide equipment for the courts. As many of you, you may be aware, I know Betsy Cohen is aware, pickleball is one of the fastest, if not fasting, fastest growing sports in the country. We are excited to partner with the city in bringing this opportunity to our community. We have the Assistant Superintendent for Parks and Rec, William Walker, here tonight, who's the person that brought this idea and opportunity to us. And with that, I am asking for your approval of the MOU between the Michigan City area schools and the Michigan City Parks and Recreation of the painting of pickleball lines at Krieger Middle School.
I'm excited something like this is coming in front of us, Mr. Walker, the new mayor. The, the feedback loop in a healthy community is such between the school system and the city, and the city to the school system, and the more cooperation in, in these kind of projects we can undertake as time goes on, the healthier both entities will be. So I'm very excited about this.
I just have a question, how, like, how do, how do people access the equipment? So I presume it's just open for anybody to use anytime, right?
Yes.
What's that? Yes. Yes, you did.
William Walker, 209th and 9th Street. We plan on using a storage bench, kind of like an out, a plastic outdoor storage thing. It's a bench that people will be able to sit on, as well as fold down the net, contraption, whatever it is, put inside, the paddles, the balls, we'll keep in there. It won't be a lock on it, but it's just so, uh, the equipment can stay safe and away from the weather. Try to only put two out there, even though we're going to paint eight courts, we're only going to put two sets of equipment out there. I was told by Mr. Cunningham that people travel with the stuff, the nets and the paddles and stuff in the trunk, so it won't be an issue. But we try to make it accessible for everybody to come out there, and we'll try to keep up to date with the vandalism and such that goes on.
And then, can we, like, call you if we need new stuff? Something happens to it?
Yeah, you know, I mean, you know, it's Michigan City Park Department, I've got an endless supply of, of equipment, but I mean, it's, uh, some, I'll replace enough throughout the year, I think we'd be okay. We've, uh, kind of experimented with the pantries in the park and the other stuff in different areas in the city already, and the city has really taken care of stuff that we've put out there so far. So we're just hoping that that continues.
Great. Well, thanks, thanks so much for doing it.
No problem.
Are there any, um, any ideas to expand this?
Um, so, on, on my proposal, I said that's a short term and immediate fix for it. We try to upgrade at least one park every year, and it was in the plans for us to put at Water Tower Park, which we're going to start, uh, working on in the next couple weeks. But I think we're trying to move it to put at Washington Park when we do our Federal Valley project. We want to put four, four courts in at, uh, Washington Park.
Any ideas for Barker?
Barker is also on the proposal. My, pickleball is a loud sport, for anybody who knows about it, and I felt like the complaints would have been a little bit, uh, more for Barker being in the middle of a residential area, area, and Krieger is kind of secluded and off in the corner by itself. And no problem.
And I know there was also, you know, some questions that we had regarding the actual use of the court. And Sedexo has, has gone out and said, you know, the courts are usable, there's some issue, there might be some issues outside of the court area, but inside the court area, they're not any concern. So, you know, painting the lines, refreshing the look of the, the court is a, is a welcome sign for us.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Painter, that passes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Walker. Next on the agenda, number five, the memorandum of understanding with the YMCA, Mr. McGuire.
Little change of pace from Dr. McCollum. Good evening, everyone. As part of your board packet, you do have the MOU that we've worked up with the YMCA. We'd like to just say thank you to the YMCA administration. It's a little later than what we would have liked to have presented to you, but with some administrative changes, that's why it, it kind of delayed some of our communication. Part of the packet, really just to point out, the number two is really on your, on your list, is really the only thing that changed, and was a major part of our conversation. We really wanted to kind of look at what the maintenance costs were for the building, and what the, the portion of the Y was using, and try to get, recoup some of those dollars from the rent that they'll be paying over the next two years. So the agreement is a two-year agreement, going back to January 1st of this year through December 31st of 2025.
Any questions?
So the contract says that there's an attachment A, but I did not see an attachment A.
An attachment date, or probably?
Attachment A.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Attachment A is the facility that's being used. That, that essentially is the mere gym and the athletic portion of the Y. Nothing changes from the previous agreement, it's all the same space that they've been using.
I mean, it was just a little confusing, because, well, it says that, that in A, it will tell us that the Y is responsible for janitorial supplies, cleaning services for the gym, pool, locker rooms, and classroom facilities that they occupy. And then the next sentence says, Michigan City area schools will be responsible for all the maintenance, supplies, services for gyms, pools, locker rooms, and classroom facilities.
So the supplies we, the, the daily supplies for the general usage, the Y is responsible for, the maintenance supplies, we're responsible for. So grease, oil, whatever it might be for HVAC, or any of the, the pool equipment, we're responsible for those maintenance supplies.
Okay. Okay. So, and so you say, um, attachment A just?
It's a spatial.
Talked about who's using what.
Yeah, it's a, it's actually a highlighted attachment that shows the space that the YMCA is using. And again, it's the athletic area of the Elston complex. That did not change. There's no added space or changes in that regard from the previous contract.
I am glad to see some. I am glad to see some language added to better define the cooperation for space between the two entities. I know we've had issues at times with, with getting some of our team's practice facilities, so hopefully that alleviates some of that.
Yeah, there was some good conversation with that as well. Essentially, with the Y is stating that their members, they would like to have some sort of language in there that protects them and their usage, they're paying for the, the space as well. But ultimately, it just came down to a mutual cooperation between the schools and the Y, just to communicate. And we, we agreed to that, that obviously we will give them ample amount of time for any usage. We've actually already started working on schedule for the swim teams and whatnot moving forward for next year. So we don't expect to see any schedule changes as far as what we've historically have used and what we'll use in the next two years. But yeah, the Y had asked for some of that language adjustments, just to clarify.
Any other questions? Seeing no further questions, how would the board like to proceed?
I would move to approve with the promis- promised attachment and the modifications that are noted.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Painter, that passes.
Oh, same, sorry.
Oh, and then one, I'm sorry, six, uh, yays and one extension. Thank you, that passes. Uh, number six, Skilman Corporation Agreement, Dr. McCollum.
Alright, thank you again, Mr. Corley. Tonight, I am recommending for approval the agreement between the Michigan City area schools and the Skilman Corporation. The purpose of this agreement is for the Skilman Group to provide a facilities assessment that includes preliminary findings along with cost estimates for existing facilities and a summary of costs for improvements or potential enhancements or new construction. Additionally, the Skilman Group will provide support with enrollment capacity, programming needs, and aligning those needs with our budget and financial projections. The value of these services will likely exceed $15,000 if the district moves forward with the recommendations. If the program does not move forward with Skilman, Skilman will request to be reimbursed for any pre-bonded services that a cost should not exceed $15,000. I would like to acknowledge that we have Scott Cherry, who is the Senior Vice President for the Skilman Group and attendance. Scott, along with Skilman, come highly recommended, and we are very excited to potentially partner with Skilman Group to develop a facility improvement program for the Michigan City area schools. And with that being said, I am recommending for your approval of the agreement between the Michigan City area schools and the Skilman Corporation.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question.
Yes.
I mean, are we moving forward away from performance management?
For this particular project, with the feasibility study, the programming and alignment, it would be correct. With, uh, recommendation would be with Skilman Corporation.
And we're still staying with performance management within the spa- within the, uh, their area of?
The design built with the?
Right.
Littleville Center and CTE.
Services?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing no further questions, how would the board like to proceed? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
We all lost our document. So you have one. So I would, yeah, I was a little confused about the, the learning needs input. Can you explain that?
The learning needs input, did you say?
Yes, it's, yeah.
Yeah, what we do, um, again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here first before I speak. The learning needs input goes along with the facility assessment and how you're going to use the space, the programming needs. The idea here is to create a assessment that not only takes into account the condition of the building, but any changes that could affect how your 20th century learning classrooms are going to be, and any changes relative to the design of that and the construction to enhance those spaces. So you're trying to take an all encompassing look of your facilities, not just from the size standpoint and the condition of the building.
So it says, um, staff input in that line, so, um, how does that look?
Well, depending on how the schools, again, every school operates a little bit different. How they engage their leaders, their, their principals in each school, their kind, their input, and how, um, they desire to learn and what they, their expectations are. We often see committees formed to do that.
Okay, I see. So, alright, I just, I'm not familiar with this process, so. So you'll work with committees set up in each school?
Pardon me?
You'll, you'll work with, um, staff committees in each school?
I think that's to be determined. The idea here is, at some point, we have to get a architect engaged along with us so that we can assess each facility. And how we go about the process to set it up is really something we need to discuss. How, you know, much input, or where are the inputs going to come from? Is it going to be teachers? Is there going to be committees? Every school, they do it similar, but not the same. We've just finished some very large projects and multiple, multiple projects in school districts around the area here. And usually, they'll form committees, they form groups, community input. Athletics becomes an important item, so that we make sure we're including all of these things when we assess these facilities. And then incorporate any of their changes into the program, and again, make sure that we account for that.
I see. Okay. I see. And so all of that is done, and that's considered the pre-bond services?
Yes. The, the idea here is that you have in front of you a large facility, I mean, many facilities throughout the district, you want to do, engage in this, uh, large facility improvement program. And there's an approach to how we can systematically and strategically get designs, cash flow, funding, construction, the needs of the community, the needs of the students, the needs of the facilities that are being occupied, and how we go about that. So that's the start of it, and then eventually have a, a plan of a attack, if you will, that you create almost your own little economy within your school district when you engage in these massive plans. I mean, you look at some of the surrounding areas that have been able to do that successfully. There has to be an approach to it. Sometimes we think of construction before we know exactly how we're going to go about what we're going to do. So that's what we do very well. We call it program management. And I think it's, helps get maximum value and, and keeps you on point, on schedule, and what you're trying to do.
I mean, that sounds like a lengthy process. So how long do you expect this, all of that assessment work to take?
There's been some work done before us. I know I've, I've been through, going, going through some documents. I think once we get an architect on board, we can go ahead, and that's part of developing a schedule for you, how long this process takes, and how we get to each of these milestones. So step one would be, as I mentioned here, to do a facility assessment, to look at each building. And then we move on with that, start to put in your learning needs and, and the input and the programmatic changes that you may encounter. And then we start to put it all together and evaluate the different facilities that you have, which ones match up best for this, and start putting costs to it, and determining what's the best way to go about it. And giving you all the information you need to make the right decision. So it is important that a architect does get engaged, because that's their specialty of laying out the plans and, and the buildings.
Great, and so when do you expect that you'll have some kind of a plan for us to look at?
That'd be hard to say, again, because we don't have that architect yet. I'm anxious to, I'm ready to go to work now. I think it's, it's an exciting opportunity for us. It's what we do, and putting a team together and getting started. That would probably be the first thing, is to lay out a plan of how we're going to approach this.
I see. Well, great, well, I look forward to updates on that.
If I, if I can just add, we're in year one of our new strategic plan, and one of the things that was emphasized, both at the town hall meetings, at the, you know, with our surveys, it came through clearly with some of the focus groups, is that the Michigan City community as a whole, and I would say students, staff, you know, administrators, and the broader community, they want Michigan City to have first-class opportunities for the students. And the work that, that Mr. Cherry will be doing along with his team touches not only the culture and environment pillar, it encompasses student voice, it encompasses, you know, meeting the needs of diverse learners from the perspective of, we want to take a look, everyone is now in the research and discovery phase, you know, taking a look at what are the kinds of opportunities that will take our district to the next level. And so when we think about the learning environments fitting the facilities, that's the kind of work that will be underway, so that. so that what they plan meets those needs. If we want first-class athletic facilities, you know, we're not going to build, you know, maybe our science labs are up to par. Maybe we need to do some things to bring them up to par, but we need to make sure that the vision for the community is aligned to the vision for the facilities as we move forward.
Sounds like a heated project.
Absolutely, and and I can say, I I've sat through a number of, uh, presentations through the years, going back to my d- days in Chicago. And Mr. Cherry and his team did an outstanding job. They presented examples of some of the work that they've done in some of our neighboring communities and in other communities. And so they know exactly what they're doing and they know how to make a vision come to life for our community. So we were excited.
Thank you.
And the other side of the coin being that i- if you look at our facilities on a building-by-building basis, I think, um, most of them are older than most of us in this room. If I'm remembering correctly, I think our Michigan City High School is the third newest building in our system, which opened in nineteen seventy-one? Two, okay, so it's it's definitely time. All of these buildings, except for two, were designed nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, nineteen seventy, uh, with education of that time in mind, with security of that time in mind, so i- if nothing else, we need to get with the twenty-first century in two thousand twenty-four, so it it's an exciting project.
Any other questions, comments by any board members?
I worked with Skilman when we redid Marsh Elementary School and it was a good experience. It wa- it was really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further comments or questions, how would the board like to proceed?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? This is paying that passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, Nusella Contract Renewal, Mrs. Beilhouser.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, tonight I'm requesting approval for the use of Title I funds to renew our Nusella platform, which is used for core instruction and then also tier two, uh, for K day, well, grade two to grade eight students. Uh, it's available in English and Spanish for students at five different comprehension levels. So I'm asking approval for that renewal.
I actually have a question about the term. It seemed like it was just a few months. Is that, is that right?
For the contract?
Yeah, so it's like you have a subscription, right, for just a certain amount of time?
Uh, our current platform ends at the end of June, so then renewing this would just pick it up in June through the whole next, through the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, how would the board like to proceed? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is paying that passes, thank you. At this time, we come to the partner agenda where board statements and our issues requiring action prior to the next board meeting. Any board members have any comments?
I would like to read a letter from the Safe Harbor Program Director, um, Brenda Johnstone. The first three quarters of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year have been exceptionally well, so this is reporting on the Safe Harbor Program. Um, exceptionally rewarding for Safe Harbor. Currently, our after-school enrichment program serves over four hundred students with an additional one hundred and twenty students benefiting from our morning care program. While our focus remains deeply rooted in STEM education, we have responded to the ongoing challenges by posed by the COVID-nineteen pandemic by introducing a literacy curriculum. This addition aims to address the learning gaps resulting from extended closures through initiatives like our book club. Students not only engage in collaborative reading experiences, but also receive books to nurture their love of reading at home. In addition to our evidence-based curriculum, we are excited to collaborate with community partners who enrich our program. The Lobesnik Center for the Arts continue to inspire our students with programs in visual and performing arts. Recently, they connected a local artist with the Safe Harbor students at Cool Spring Elementary Program. The artist will use nature-themed art created by the students as inspiration for sculpture she has been commissioned to create for displays in the park. Additionally, our partnership with a positive approach to teen health path has been providing outreach services to our middle school students, positively impacting both students and families alike. We have also been able to expand our horticulture program with an addition of a second instructor. This program has allowed students to contribute to the aesthetic appeal of courtyards at Marsh and Nap Elementary Schools, fostering a sense of pride and ownership with our school community. During the school year, new initiatives have fostered collaborations between two departments at MCIS. Safe Harbor has facilitated the acquisition of farm bots, which have been assembled by students in the high school program, Club Explore. These innovative machines automate the entire process of planting, nurturing and harvesting plants, promising not only educational enrichment, but also the potential to evolve into sustainable food source for the wider community. Additionally, a partnership with the IT Department has fostered the establishment of maker spaces. Through the joint effort, essential equipment and supplies have been procured to enhance students' learning experiences, both during regular school hours and in af- after-school activities. These endeavors mark significant steps toward STEM enrichment and fostering practical skills among our students. This year also marked the return of elementary-level robotics teams since the onset of the pandemic. Representing Nap and Joy Elementary Schools, our first LEGO League teams participated in competition last November. Both teams did exceptionally well and the Nap team's performance was recognized with an innovation award. Meanwhile, our high school robotics team is currently immersed in the FRC robotics season. Despite not securing placement in their recent competition in Mishawaka, we are immensely proud of their achievements and eagerly anticipate their upcoming competition in Plainfield, Indiana. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to Jeff Rochewak for assuming the role of coach following Ralph G.'s resignation. Looking forward, Safe Harbor is committed to expanding its reach to serve more students by augmenting our staff pool. Moreover, we are actively exploring collaborations with organizations such as the Girl Coalition of Indiana and the Boy Scouts of America. We believe that these partnerships will enhance our mission, enabling us to better cater to the needs of our student body and their families. In closing, I wish to express my sincere appreciation for your unwavering support of Safe Harbor and its endeavors. Together, we're making a tangible difference in the lives of our students, empowering them to thrive academically and beyond. Um, Safe Harbor is a wonderful after-school program and, um, I think it's just a great opportunity for our kids after school. Just, you know, it it's a safe place, it's it learning, they're learning a lot while they're there and, um, I'm excited to have my child as part of it.
Thank you. Any other comments, board members?
Uh, first off, I'm glad we had Sensei Sagawa here today. Uh, just one more note I wanted to offer on that exchange program. It had been five years since we had done it. The, uh, exchange school, the school in Japan, that program, their English program that comes here, it's a competitive program. Kids fight to get into that program for the opportunity to come to Michigan City High School to the United States. So that's, that's an amazing statement that that Mike has been able to put a program that prominent and that impressive together in our backyard. The next one I want to recognize is, uh, again, we had a great regional and semi-state weekend up at Michigan City High School in March. Some great games up there, but again, to recognize our staff and, you know, we always put the names of our directors out there and our principals out there. But that weekend is, those weekends now are so good because we have such amazing workers from all levels, everyone taking tickets, working security, working behind the counters. They all do such an incredible job to bring in all these visitors from all over the northern half of the state of Indiana and make their trip to Michigan City memorable. I'll also note, uh, we talked a little bit about strategic plan stuff. I'm a part of the clear communications pillar. I've got a couple of members in here with me. Um, we're making exciting progress. We're looking at some exciting projects, including, uh, a potential welcoming schools designation for all of our buildings here in the next couple of years. Uh, improvements to the entrances of the schools, including just some some cleanup and some modernization, but to make it much more clear, especially for the buildings where you have multiple entrances, where you need to go, who you're going to talk to, those kind of things. So that's very exciting. Uh, one more name I want to give a shout out to is Shane Hemphill, one of our volleyball players. Second season we're in? Second season of volleyball. We have our first scholarship athlete that has come out of boys volleyball in Shane Hemphill, so congratulations to him. A a great family there, the Hemphills. His big brother playing international basketball after coming through Michigan City High School, got to play in the big dance at at Drake. So congratulations to them. And then finally, you guys have also seen a lot of the opportunities with kindergarten roundup, with the Little Wolves Center. Uh, we had an open house at Little Wolves, which was amazing. The facility is beautiful. There's still a little bit of work being done. We're getting the classrooms ready. But the program is going amazing. We also got to see the, uh, other side where the career center stuff is being built. That's incredibly exciting to be able to modernize our career offerings. You know, we're, we're in that AK Smith building that was built again in the nineteen sixties. It was designed for classrooms. We tried to retrofit it to make some of these programs cram in there, but now we're going to have the opportunity to build facilities to these programs instead of the reverse. So that's very exciting. And to end it, I just want to say, you know, what, no matter what programs you're looking at in the Michigan City Area Schools, I don't think we say it enough, but we want your kids here in Michigan City, where, whether it's Little Wolves, kindergarten roundup, any of our schools, the career center, whatever. You know, you have a lot of choices these days. We want your kids in Michigan City and then thanks to everyone who has, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments? All right, so I guess it's me. So again, I am happy to be here. This is my first board meeting, I think, for the year in person. Um, so it's great to be here alive instead of either by Zoom getting disconnected or not connected. Um, so I'm happy to be here. Again, um, exciting stuff going on. Um, like my other two board members have echoed in some of the statements we've seen, congratulations to our students. Um, having our students being recognized, I think is very important. I think recognition is very important. I think it's a big process, uh, big part of their process of them, you know, going on and doing greater things. Secondly, um, being out and about this past couple of weeks here in our, in our school system. Had the opportunity today to do the apple, apple dumpling, which is something that we at Rotary do, but we went to, um, Lake Hills, read to the third grade c- class and just seeing those students and just, you know, being able to, um, tell them about the four-way test and read and get to know them, get to talk to them, just seeing how how happy they are and just, you know, so vibrant. Um, it just makes me happy to be here and should make us, should make us happy of of what we're producing in our school system. And then secondly, had the opportunity to, um, be a part of the sixth grade career expo, um, career in college expo, um, event at Lake Hills again. And I think sometimes, uh, again, I've always said that, like, I I think we're just so underestimated in the things that we have going on here that, um, I think it's great that we're doing things, but we need to just continue to write our own narrative because nobody's going to do it for us and just to highlight the the good things we have going there. What was so dynamic about that? Not only did we have our young kids getting exposed to different careers and getting them set on a, a path to possibly go to college, but we had our career tech kids as vendors who have kind of decided on a careers that they wanted to go to, basically mirroring to those, to the, to these students coming up that here's, you know, the focus in explaining to them, go across those career fields. So, I mean, it's just like a double whammy there. We got, you know, we got those kids that we have built up and getting ready to send out and now they're basically role modeling to those kids coming up. I mean, we have some really, really good stuff going on here. And like, uh, um, board member Gretchen said, we want your kids here, um, and so bring them. Um, so, um, to finish off, again, I just want to thank Dr. Watkins, um, and her staff, Dr. McCollum and the board, and I mean, the cabinet and our staff, our board, um, just continuing to move forward, um, with what we have going on. Hearing and talking about, um, the things we have going on, we had Skilman come up, we had, um, just the different, um, things that we have, you know, our students. We're, we're moving forward and, I mean, every day it just seems like I've been, this is my twelfth year here, which I can't believe I've been here for twelve years. I only was going to do four. Uh, but my twelfth year here and just, it just, you know, every year it just gets better and better. You know, sometimes you think, ah, we're, we're at, we're here, next you know, we keep going, so, again. But it couldn't be done without the collaboration and this is just not one piece of the pie, it's the whole pie that we all work together to make sure is is working right. So thank you all for, um, continuing to, um, invest in this school system and in our kids, so. With that being said, uh, Dr. Watkins, anything else?
I just, I just wanted to, uh, thank some of our partners. Uh, if you look at the number of individuals who were at the College and Career Fair, uh, last week, uh, the Little Wolves Early Learning Open House was actually sponsored by the Michigan City Chamber of Commerce. You know, they wanted to come out and see what was happening and I only heard, you know, very positive things. The Chamber on May first is sponsoring a tour to various manufacturing companies here in La Porte County to ensure that counselors understand that, you know, manufacturing is core to the work that is taking place, you know, here in Michigan City so that they can really begin to better and s- support our students and their understanding of the opportunities, you know, that exist. Also just wanted to, uh, thank the, uh, EDCMC, the Economic Development Corporation. We were at a meeting probably three weeks ago, uh, there were some companies represented who said, we really need to touch bases, you know, with some of the students and share with them the the vast array of opportunities. It's not just technology, it's not just robotics, you know, we need operations folks and business folks. And there were six, uh, key, I would say, ex- senior executives who came out to Michigan City High School. They talked with, for example, the, uh, the Computer Technology Honor Society students. They talked to some of the construction students, you know, they visited classrooms and they want to do more as well. And so I I think that, you know, things are are really on the move, on the horizon. It's not just the school district, the city is at the forefront, you know, our local companies are at the t- at the forefront. What more? There's so many great things on the horizon and we just can't wait to see what's coming.
Thank you. Any other comments from any, any other cabinet members, anybody? No, no, I just want to give one more plug, I forgot as I was rambling. Um, this is, uh, the Citywide Easter Egg Hunt is this weekend. Um, Saturday we will be out at Feder's Alley. Um, the gates will open at eleven-thirty AM. The hunt will start at twelve and will be over at twelve oh-two. Doesn't take long. The setup is, the setup, setup and preparation is a long, lot, lot more time than this actual hunt is, is more of a gathering. Um, so, um, if you are, uh, a youth from zero to twelve, come on out. We will have golden egg tick, uh, golden tickets in some of the eggs where they have additional prizes, uh, some characters out, um, so come on out. And if you are a, an adult who would like to volunteer, um, tomorrow at the senior center from nine AM to twelve PM, we'll be stuffing eggs. Probably have about twenty thousand plus eggs to stuff with candy. Not only is it a good time to come out and volunteer, but it's also a good time to come out and fellowship with your other people from the community as you sit around a table and stuff these eggs, you'll get to talk to each other, get to know each other, so come on out. Um, I will feed you if you come out. I have, I will have donuts in the morning and pizza in the afternoon, so come on out. I'll, I'll have some, something for you to take back with you. So please, so if you, you know, have time, come out to to volunteer to stuff the eggs, but if not, um, bring your children out to the Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday. Seeing none further, this meeting is adjourned. See you all next month.